Anything to report out of the closed session?
We do have two actions to report this evening on a motion by Councilmember Greenow and seconded by Mayor Protem Inscore. We had a motion to reject the claim of Becky Bohannon that was carried unanimously. In addition, on a motion by Mayor Protem Inscore and Councilmember Altman, we had a motion to reject the claim of Kari McCormick on behalf of all similarly situated persons, and that also carried unanimously for zero.
Very good. Thank you. Please roll call.
Councilmember Altman?
Here.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Shalane?
Here.
Mayor Protem Inscore?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here. And let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, we're going to enter the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed toward the entire Council, and any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allowed to three minutes in each, three minutes each, in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to action being taken by the Council. Do we have any public comments? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Council. I'm Dan Schmidt. I own some property here in the city, although I reside outside the city. I'd like to address number nine, our art collection. I would like to see the City Council come up with a strong Employee of the Month program, and one of the benefits of being named Employee of the Month is be able to take a piece of art and take it home and maybe think of other incentives that we can use to disperse that collection among members of the community. I'm fearful that we will incur a huge burden in future months and years to store and display and care for that art collection when I think it can be really better enjoyed among the families of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. You said nobody was online?
I first wanted to talk about COINTELPRO, a domestic terrorist organization of the FBI and police, and I just went to the DA to talk to her, and she proved she was corrupt because she talked to me about what I was saying was behavioral issues. I do not have a psych disorder. I do not have mental illness. I'm not crazy. I am a victim and targeted individual of COINTELPRO. I am sick and tired of police harassing me, and I'm wondering why we're not talking about this. What I can prove would actually change world and American history. Richard Griffin thinks it's okay to threaten me and tell me he's going to arrest me and promise to me because I want to ask Ray why he let psychotic Sarah Melson, Robin Robles, and Michael James Albarichi's false narratives propagate. Hundreds of lies are being propagated against me. Everyone's afraid to talk about what happened pre-lights. This is a form of genocide. The FBI and police are committing murder via COINTELPRO. It has been increasing for the last 10 years, and reports have gone to the United Nations Office of the High Commissioner of Human Rights. I put my life on hold for six months to be a loving caregiver for Dave. They are using this narrative to try and say I harmed him, which I never would because Ray was there and I cared for him as well. So the fact that they're using someone's father, my father as well, in these heinous narratives, and the Delnor Unified School District has participated, I want to ask why this city allowed COINTELPRO to descend on here three times and terrorize me. I would like to do a presentation to alert people to the tactics. This is extreme psychological warfare. It's torture. It's terrorism. It's the systematic destruction of a targeted individual's life. I understand people will be like, what the heck is she doing? Why is she shining lights, all this? What we need to ask is what happened before then? The years of terrorism, torture, police criminality, hundreds of federal crimes committed, constitutional law violated, international law, all human rights conventions. I'm not going to be scared or intimidated. I did not break the Espionage Act like Snowden unfortunately did, and I'm trying to do things the right way. I went to the FBI for help, and instead of helping me, they turned COINTELPRO on me. COINTELPRO is a sadistic psychological warfare program that is being refined by the FBI and police here in Amplacer County, and I may be one woman, but I'm a strong person, and I will clear my name of the heinous allegations. And for the DA to dismiss what I said about brain-to-computer interface, Karen Moxon's UC Davis lab received a $36 million DARPA grant and has the spectral imaging facility that has one of the most sophisticated and advanced lasers in the world. The nanobiotechnology in my body-
You're going to finish that thought. Your time is up.
Yeah, can be detected at any nanotech lab, at any UC school. So how do I get, who do I contact about doing a presentation of COINTELPRO because it's a form of genocide? And I'm whistleblower, civil human rights activist, social justice persons are becoming targets of this, and journalists are moving out of the country. So I'm not sure which one of you I talk to about doing a presentation on COINTELPRO and police brutality. Because it's happening here, and I have proof.
Yeah, go ahead and just give your contact information to staff, and we can-
Okay.
-go from there.
I'm going to take my press hat off just for a moment and just make some praiseworthy laudatory comments about what's taken place since last Friday at four o'clock, a little after four. First of all, I took a shower this morning, which is something I'm not used to, at Ender's Pool, and I heard the chatter of, oh, this is great. And you really ought to all be very proud of yourselves after this ordeal, which we're not yet out of. But I just want to share with you some of the challenges we have at the triplicate, which I'm now writing for. Everything with us is a week behind. Tomorrow, Tuesdays, is our deadline. I don't know what's happened until you do it, and then by the time this story is over, it'll be August 30th edition. So, City Manager and Mayor, I'd like someone, a spokesman, to keep us informed so we can tout your deeds, and we can tell the community what's going on. Digital has suddenly grown very important, and we're putting more time into that, but the print version is always a week behind. So if you can, let us know what's happening ahead of time so we can anticipate, let the public know, and also better for it. So we're in support of what you're doing here. These are difficult times we're living in there. We all know that. Everybody got to work together, and that's what's going on. And I can see that very much, seeing all these agencies coming together at Saturday, six o'clock, working to solve the problem that we have facing us. So please keep this in mind so we can work with you closely one week ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All righty, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Oh, come on up, sir. Yeah, come on up. Yeah, come on up. Were you trying to speak on a specific agenda or item, or was it? Oh, that's item number nine, and that will come later on. All righty. So no other public comment on, general public comment. I'll go ahead and close that, and I'm going to ask the Council, I want to move the City Manager report to right now instead of at the end of the meeting because we have some guests that would like to speak.
Yes.
All right, very good.
Mayor, may I address Mr. Gitlin?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Gitlin, I'm acting as the Public Information Officer for the incident for the OES, Emergency Operations Center, and if you could leave your email with Mr. Weir before the meeting's over, and we can, I'll look into adding you to that.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Wright, members of the Council. I do apologize for my attire today. Like most of the community, it has not been, it has not been a normal couple of days. In fact, as Mr. Gitlin spoke about Friday, about four o'clock, power went out, and it has been a, it has been a fight ever since. It is a fight for our community with the loss of power. There is a serious forest fire raging not far from Crescent City proper and is very close to Gaski. With us tonight, and I'd like to start this report off with trying to update the Council and the community from the people that know best, and that's the Incident Management Team, Team 15, that is here trying to bring in the resources to fight this fire, to fight it for, for all of our community, to stop it before it has even more impact. And with that, it's my great pleasure to introduce Tom Stokesbury. Tom, just for yourself. Okay, it's Tom Stokesbury, PIO for the Incident Management Team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for giving me some time to speak. I'd like to give you an update on the incident. The fire did grow another 5,000 acres today. So currently, we're sitting at 38,955 acres. About 100 of that is across the border and into Oregon, so we own most of that fire, our Incident Management Team. We are working in conjunction with Northwest Team 13. They are handling that piece on the Oregon side of the border, but we are working in conjunction with them. At the Idowau Caltrans Station, we did a successful firing operation, and we burned out around that to protect that station in conjunction with their team. It was a huge success at that station. We currently have 850 personnel assigned with over 300 more coming in overnight, so we should be up around 1,150 firefighters battling this fire right now. The wind event that happened last night, it did push the fire, but it didn't get as close to Gaski as we thought it was going to get, so it's still about three miles away. So that was good news. So we're looking at stabilizing that area before we start repopulating it with the public. My ICs want to thank you for the cooperation with the city, the county sheriffs. It's been amazing. The OES, the amount of cooperation and the outflow of information has been really good. It was a, it was a little difficult at first. You know, you got a lot of outlying communities, but I think we've really streamlined that, and I think that's working really well. We are having another community meeting on Wednesday night at 6:00 PM at the Delnor County Fairgrounds. We would love for you all to attend. I believe Erica is going to come and speak. So, lot of resources coming in, multiple hotshots coming in, crews. We still have only got the one structure lost, so that's really good news. We had 20 Type 1 engines show up, and we're in place early this morning. Those are your structure engines that do structure protection. We have another 35 on order that'll be coming. So we're the number one priority fire in the country, and we're getting everything that we're ordering. We have crews every time I pull into that parking lot or come out of my office, here's another crew, here's another strike team of engines. So they're coming. The word has been heard. Do you have any questions for me?
One quick question, because I know a lot of people that are maybe watching online would be interested. Gaski, three miles away at this point. I know that we need to stabilize that fire before we allow anybody else, anybody to return to Gaski, any kind of timeframe.
Liftoff evacuation is going to be a call for the sheriff, but we are working in conjunction with him. We are consulting with him. The meetings we had this morning, what he basically told us was somewhere between the 24 and 48 hour period, we're going to reevaluate, and if he's feeling better about it, then we will, will repopulate that. We want to do it in the same fashion that we did the evacuation in, over a period of three or four hours. So everybody's getting back in safely. There's no rushing, and that's our main goal, safety for the public and the firefighters.
Thank you. You guys, by the way, have been absolutely incredible and-
Thank you. I'll pass that along to my team and the firefighters. I appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely.
So, our Incident Management Team, we're an inter-agency management team. We're federal. We fight fire all over the United States, including Alaska and the Pacific Islands. We have 70 people on our team with multiple experience. We've been fighting fire in the northern state here a lot in the last few years. The majority of our team is from Southern California, but I can tell you that I am from Humboldt. I've been a member of the Six Rivers National Force for 18 years. I'm now a regional employee, but I still work on the Six Rivers as a remote employee. I do public affairs, but emphasize in fire. So I know what it's like to be behind the Redwood Curtain when that road closes and that infrastructure goes down. My deputy, Tom Ingberg, is from Ohio, and, you know, I don't mean to brag, but I like my PIO shop. I think we're some of the best in the business. We can accommodate and get messaging to anybody. We can. And when people come to us and they say, hey, we're not getting it. I don't have internet. I don't have this. We find a way, and we accommodate those people. So that's our job here, is to mitigate this issue so this, this community can get back to normal. And we're not going to leave. We're working 16 hours a day. We have engines on 24-hour shifts, so we are not going anywhere until this situation is mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. We do have to leave. We have a couple of the meetings to get to, but thank you for the time.
No, thank you.
Eric has all my contact info. I am available. Tom will be available. Please reach out if you guys need anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Like you said, big thank you to all the firefighters that are there really risking, you know, their lives. And you just, you never know what the fire is going to do. Weather is unpredictable. Conditions are tough in that area, and there's a lot of critical infrastructure that they are, that they are protecting. I will tell you, and I don't know if this is, this is, was public information or not, but they, the firefighters are doing everything they can to protect Gaski, protect that critical infrastructure. One of the pieces of critical infrastructure is Camp 6. Camp 6 is a critical communications site for the, for the region. The, as the, they had firefighters around it. A thundercloud collapsed basically right on top of them, spreading fire all around them. They fought that. They saved it. It came, came right over the top from what I've heard. They saved Camp 6, and all of them ended up getting out safely. So, I mean, those are the types of things that are going on, on a day-in, day-out basis, just, just to the north of us there in, in Gaski. And, and I can't thank these guys enough, all the firefighters that are, that are here doing what they do for our community. It is, it's really, really special. The EOC. So EOC has been, has been fully stood up. It's all about partnership. It's all about cooperation. It's all about this community coming together. We're fortunate. They're handling the fire. Sheriff Scott, his team, they're up there. They're evaluating things. Sheriff Scott has barely left that. So again, my hat's, that's off to him. He is, he's involved. He's understanding. He's using his, his personal knowledge of our community to try to make sure that this team is aware. A lot of this team is, is not from here, so having that, that institutional knowledge there is, is very important. Chief Griffin has been the, the law liaison at the, at the EOC, making sure that, that there's communication and that we understand what's going on there so that we can try to support their efforts from the EOC level. The EOC is Unified Command, so that's basically the city, the county, everyone coming together, disaster service workers. The school district has been invaluable in this whole process as well. When the evacuation order was, was announced for, for Gaski, there wasn't, there was a lot of time to, to try to evacuate, considering, you know, it's an evacuation with a hard deadline. But nonetheless, we have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community. School district stepped up immediately. They sent six buses up to, to Gaski, just in case people didn't have transportation to get down. Fortunately, a lot of that wasn't needed, but nonetheless, the resources were there if the people needed it. ADA buses were provided, and it happened just in an instant. It was just a meeting that we were there. Jeff Harris, Superintendent, made it happen, and it came together. And that's what's been happening day in and day out. The community is, is suffering right now. It is one thing to go one day without power. We are now on day, I've lost track of time, to be honest, what, day four, right? I mean, it's, and as the time goes on, right, those needs increase. People are, people are definitely needing some of their critical facilities, and so providing things like a place to, to charge, you know, if you have your oxygen, supplied to oxygen, you need a place to charge that. So these things have been stood up across the community, against working with Pacific Power, working with our community partners. Right now, there's a, a Comfort Station, or it's a Community Resource Center stood up at the high school. There are two tents there. They provide water, provide ice. It's a place to charge your oxygen or your cell phones. I even think they have a place for nursing mothers to, to have a separate location there. You can charge your CPAP machine there if you have a rechargeable type. And then also, we have set up a water distribution facility there on a hydrant. Director Dever was, Director Jaeger was instrumental in, in setting that up. So there's hoses available, people that need water to fill up their containers so they can flush their toilet. They can go there. It's free. Fill up your containers and bring your, that water back to your house so you can have sanitary facilities. We have now partnered with the, with the Harbor and Pacific Seafoods there. They're providing ice, and so it was another key infrastructure, another key need for people. Their food is starting to get to a point where it can't hold anymore just by not opening the refrigerator. It's just not, it's too long. And so now we have ice distribution. That ice distribution is, hours are, do you remember, Kelly?
Right. Yeah, it's 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the end of Citizen Stock Road. It is salt, water, ice, so it's not consumable. It's only, can only be used to keep your food cold. And, and the owner said that at 5:00 PM, when he leaves, he will fill the containers with ice, so if people are still coming, they can grab some. You have to bring your own container, but he has shovels there.
It's another key resource, trying to, trying to get that information out to people so they know where to go to some of these locations. Those are some of the things that are available here in town. There have also been facilities set up in Klamath as well as in Smith River. So it was Smith River Gym, I think it still is, Hall and Quett Hall, as well as providing services. And then in Klamath, it was Margaret Keating School for a while, and now I believe it is the, the UROC Community Center, correct?
It's a Pacific, Pacific Power tent set up at 225 Klamath Boulevard in Klamath, near the UROC main office.
So those are some of those utilities, some of those services, trying to get them to where people need them. And right now, it's across the entire county, so that makes it even more challenging. Power is one of those things that everything ends up running off it, obviously, right? And so as you're talking about that, it's not only the power, but it's also communications. And so dealing with Frontier, Verizon, US Cellular, every service provider has had some sort of problem intermittently throughout this entire time. That's created issues on several different levels. One, just generally communicating. Secondly, getting updates to people is challenging, especially when they're without power. They don't have internet a lot of times, and then when they can't, don't have good cellular reception, they can't even get data via cellular. So with this, we're trying to push it out. Radio has been absolutely invaluable. BiCoastal Media has been such a huge partner. They have, they have basically assigned Kelly to assist us with the PIO, getting information to people, and PIO is Public Information Officer. But getting that information to people is critical, not only for evacuation notices, but also where to get these services. So we are trying our best to get these out. We are now, I'm just looking at it, we're now on update 16 to the community, and so trying to just keep them updated on a very frequent basis. They've also now started a radio set times, and I think that's eight o'clock in the morning, noon, and 5:00 PM. You can tune to KPOD and KSRV both same time, and you can get updates at that time. So trying to get that out to people. If you don't have that, that key data through cellular or internet, radio is a great way of doing it. A lot of people I know are going into their car, sitting there, and just turning on the radio. You can do it that way. Also, buying radios, I think their stores are starting to get them back in, but we can, you continue to check on that. Get a radio, get a little weather radio, have batteries in it, keep it charged. That's the best way to do it. So that's, that's one of those key challenges that we're continuing to, to try to, to try to address. Another one is trying to, trying to mitigate the, or lessen the impacts, and we're working hand-in-hand with Pacific Power on that, and they are working hard. They have a lot of crews out. They're bringing in a lot of resources from other areas, but it's simply not enough to provide for the whole county. They have a two-megawatt generator, which is a massive generator. It's connected in at their North Crest site right now. That is what has charged a critical line. So they're trying to bring critical facilities up first. It's a big generator, but it's not near enough to do a whole lot for a whole community. So we have a, a line that goes down, picks up the jail. The jail was having problems with power, so we needed to pick up that critical facility. Also, the Safeway area, fairgrounds, some of those, those key areas in and around town, and so that's why they charged that line. So there's that line that kind of runs down the highway. They can't just, it wasn't that we just picked and chew, and chose those particular, you know, buildings. You have to energize this line, and then those buildings are on the line. There's also a lot of other things that are on that line, so that is why that was done. So it's not like, okay, we're going to energize this one particular apartment complex. They just happen to be on that line. They, they have also brought in a team from PG&E. So they are trying to partner with PG&E and pull resources from other companies. PG&E has started, and I believe it is hopefully up and running. They're, they were trying very hard as we started this meeting, I know, to get it up and running. It's called the, I think it's the Belmont Substation, which is right off of Washington Boulevard. That's a 12-megawatt generator system. They set it up in the, in the road, and that will power a lot of north of town. So basically, the, the hope is that from Washington Boulevard north up to about Lakeview will be energized. north up to about Lakeview will be energized, hopefully. Hopefully, it's energized as we're speaking, I know they were trying hard. They're going to continue to try to do some of those types of things to get key areas. So they're going to continue to bring in those resources and try to spread them to key areas around the community. So we were trying to work hand in hand with them on that. They're also bringing in several other large generators to try to meet some of the more critical needs. For example, and this is partnering with with them, with the city, they the hospital actually has our generator, had it as of they had it as of this morning, the the city generator that we use for lift stations. So we downsized that generator to a fifty-five kilowatt so that we could supply the hospital with our hundred kilowatt generator for their dialysis. It's one of those things, people could not wait. This was the last day, we had to get them up and going. So through that partnership with Pacific Power and then the local electricians, specifically Matt Faring on that one and Northridge Electric, they got that up and going and met that community need. So there are things like that happening all across, and it's not just Crescent City, but we're trying to do it in the outline areas as well. In Klamath, there was, gosh, and I'm starting to get a little bit a little tired, but.
The Water District.
Well, Klamath Water District, we were coordinating with to make sure they had their needs met. We're also reaching out to Urock Tribe, Resegini, trying to make sure that that we're understanding those needs. And then there is, and it's it's not going to come to me, I don't think, starts with a W, there's a key market there in Klamath.
Oh, Woodland Villa.
Woodland Villa, you are on it, yes, thank you. Woodland Villa, and so, you know, that it now has a generator supplied by Pacific Power to try to meet the needs that needs there in Klamath. In in Smith River, Loheviya Market has been has been powered, made sure Dollar General was powered. And then some other critical facilities in and around the the Crescent City area as well. But again, trying to reach out, trying to find out where those needs are, trying to continue to bring in these generators. As they start to bring in their big distribution generators and get areas back in power on on generator power, then we'll be able to pull out some of those generators and we'll try to again expand that that reach. There's also a lot of people with critical medical needs. And so they've been they've been reaching out to Pacific Power. From my understanding, over a hundred and twenty small generators have been supplied to those people. Those people that are, say, on oxygen or have a medical need and they can't leave their house. And so there's been a an absolute, call it a scramble, but it is a it is organized chaos to a certain extent to try to meet those needs, understand those needs and and try to try to get that out to the community. E O C is 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 a little a little bit of a madhouse right now. I mean, there's a lot going on. I know that Health and Human Services have a list of patients with with critical needs as well, and so they're trying to reach out. I think they reached out to over five hundred of those critical need patients today just to try to check in. So they're doing that outreach, but I would like to use this platform. If you have a need, please make sure you are you are calling the hotline. Now, I know the hotline has had some communication problems as well. But I believe those are those are somewhat fixed, you know, knock on wood, at this point. Call that hotline number, the hotline number is four six four zero nine one one. And you will, it is manned twenty-four hours a day at this point. Let them know what your needs are, and then we can get you to the right person to make sure that we're either trying to address it or that we're trying to gather the resources to accommodate it on that side of things. That's your that's the the, I guess, the the bulk of the update at this point from a council standpoint. Just know that that your staff is is working hard, has worked hard throughout the weekend. Like I say, Ms. Ms. Shalong, who is who is just Kelly Shalong when she is in the E O C as part of BiCoastal Media, is doing a fabulous job. Getting the information out is one of the most critical things that we can possibly do. It's it's a scary time right now, and people need to understand where those resources are, what's happening in Gasky, get those updates to them. And then the the rest of the directors and a lot of your city staff have been working tirelessly throughout the weekend and and trying to to provide for the needs, so. Questions?
I I can just add a couple of things. We also, for those that can't, that don't have internet or cell service, we are deploying community information boards with the updates actually printed on them so they can just go there and read them if need if needed. Those are going to be located at all the community resource centers. In one in Klamath and then in the Delmont High School, also the Delmont Fairgrounds, the Shelter, as well as the Smith River Gym and the Howland Quet Hall in Smith River. And I I believe there's going to be one at the Talawa Administration Building. But what's really cool that we've struggled with today, but we're very close, is also providing those printed out in Spanish and Mong as well. So and it's it's a challenge, there's, I mean, my update sixteen is like eight pages now of information, and it's just a continual live document that we're updating like every two to three hours, unless there's, you know, an evacuation notice that needs to go out. But just all the people that are coming together to make these things happen is absolutely, I don't even, you can't even describe it. And the city staff, Linda Lever and Robin and Sunny and Chief Griffin and Ashley Taylor, I mean, everybody, Martha was there today working. And but nobody has worked harder than Mr. Eric Weir. I mean, we have one room called the Generator Room. We've had to create a whole room for that, and this man is, he is responsible. He and Deb Wakefield have worked tirelessly to get generators in the right places.
It's a it's a it's a big effort by a lot of people, all coming together, like what like what Kelly had said.
Dave Jaeger.
Dave Jaeger.
And Rob, did I say Robin?
Yeah. And it's just a great example of what this community does, right? It just comes together, right? It's you you do not hear, not my job in that room, right? Because there there is no one job in that room, right? It's everybody coming together, and it's what's happening in the community too. I mean, that's it's it's a beehive in the E O C, but the community is doing the same thing, right? Neighbors are helping neighbors, neighbors are bringing buckets of water to to their neighbors when they can't do it. I've heard countless stories of that checking on their neighbors, and you know, and that's what it's going to take. I would like to also just highlight Deborah Wakefield and Cindy Henderson. Cindy was a past E O C manager for Delmont County. They have they're volunteering their time and and have been with us every step of the way and are a guiding force and just they're they are a needed resource and they are they're animals when it comes to E O C and making sure this community has what it needs.
In addition, our public works team has been working twelve-hour shifts, twelve hours on, twelve hours off, and then some to keep our water pumps going and lift stations powered and all of those things that go along with it and challenges that have arisen. I mean, just our entire city team is just knocking it out of the park.
And the county is is working hard as well on their side of things. You know, roads have been have been a challenge, stoplights, you know, and stoplights, you know, when we're out for this long, they don't flash red anymore, they don't have any power, so they just go dark. That's a that's a challenge. Chief Griffin and his team have done a good job trying to evaluate that situation, make sure, you know, some signs were up and Chief Griffin was giving me the eye there. Chief, you want to talk a little about what people should do on a on a unlit signal? Well, come up here then, chief.
Thank you. It turns into a four-way stop, treated as a four-way stop. Or if it's not a four-way intersection, it's a three-way stop or it's a stop. Doesn't mean just go through it because there's no light. So we did have those issues which come up every time we have power outage, so. I'll take a second just to say the cohesiveness that I've seen between the city and the county, I haven't seen that in a long time at all. So there's always problems, there's always issues that rise up in this type of situation. But the cohesiveness of specifically in the management team that I've seen between Neil, Randy and Mr. Weir has been amazing. So and it's that sets the tone for everybody. We've all been working there long hours. I don't know how much of sleep I've got either, but I know he's got less, so it's great to see. So that's what people need to see also and understand what's going on in there. So very proud of that on both sides of the ball, that coming together and how we did, so. But if there's any questions also about the PD or anything like that, just let me know what will be done. So law enforcement wise, we are very good setting that. A lot of agencies coming from out of county that have the request of Sheriff Scott, they came up Santa Barbara, Yolo County, Mendocino County. There's actually one former deputy that used to work here that came up to work very well. They're out, so you may have a Santa Barbara deputy come to your house if you're calling for service. Just that's that's what we do when we're in time for need, so. We've had to cancel a couple of trainings is all, stuff like that, but our staffing is very well. Thanks to your support in the, you know, for that, we've prepared for it as good as we can, so. Just keep it through, we'll make it through it and we'll build up stronger for the next time something like this comes around, so. Sorry to go too long, but thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir. And Chief Griffin, like we said, has been putting in long hours and and really holding down the fort because so many of the sheriff's resources, you know, are focused in on the fire, the evacuation's getting people out, and that is that is where we come together. Also, I'd like to point out the the fairgrounds and the 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 critical facility that that has become. So that is the sort of the 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 base for the firefighters from the from the federal side of things where they're based out of right now. It's also our shelter site, Red Cross, Mary Dormin, my goodness. I mean, what an amazing resource, what an amazing team that they have there to really, again, try to come together. Currently, right now, they have about a hundred and thirty people in the shelter. So that's that's getting up there as far as numbers. We do have an expansion plan if needed, if there's more people. And as, you know, this goes on, more and more people need need additional help, and so we are we're actively planning for that as well.
With updated light on our service. Speak for everyone, but I did just get a text message from Sergeant Lopez who lives over near Mary Peacock in that area, so the power is on over there, so no, at least, sounds like they're charging it. I just got that there, so I figured I'd share it, so. I'll be checking my home security cameras too, so. Just wanted to share that.
Yes, and so hopefully with that with that Belmont site up, I believe they thought that they could energize maybe somewhere around three or four thousand customers. So it is it is a big site, that's maybe about a third or so of the total customers. It does not include really Crescent City proper at this point, but there are working on on additional generators to be brought in. And so as we start to get these areas up and going, we will be able to spread other resources out as well. So it'll be a continual journey until the fire finally gives us enough of a break that they can they can get to those transmission lines, make sure that they're okay. Currently, right now, there was active fire burning underneath about a mile and a half of the transmission lines. So that's that's really what has has set this up. The Kelly Fire is has merged with the, gosh, with the Holiday Fire. And so they have one big fire, mile and a half burning right underneath the transmission lines. The last update I received from Pacific Power is they didn't think they were damaged. So that's the important thing, and as they're getting little breaks, they're coming in and they're they're wrapping poles and they're trying to to do what they can as soon as that fire moves on, because that's the other part part is it's not moving very fast, it's just kind of sitting there, it's good and bad, right? Where it's not moving very fast, but it's just sort of sitting right there. And as they as it finally gets moved out or they put it out or they get those lines cleared, then at that point in time, they'll be able to fly them, they'll inspect them, they'll make sure they're good, and that's when we'll finally have power back on. From everything they're telling us, though, that is that is still at least several days, a week, maybe, out. So we will we will see. But until then, we'll be working with Pacific Power trying to get portions back up. Oh, one ninety-nine too, if I can just speak to one ninety-nine. It also, obviously, very impacted, fire all around it, did did burn lots of debris, trees down on the road. The report that I heard, at least from the early report, is although there was debris down, there wasn't a lot of major structural damage to it, at least in the in the early report. And so from that side of things, there is not going to be the big construction effort that's going to be needed to put that road in service. It's more just going to be debris repair, some minor construction, but the fire needs to move through as well on that side of things. So still several days out on that one as well, but long term, if we can keep the infrastructure intact, the reopening is going to be a lot sooner.
Very good, thank you, sir. Counsel, anything I'd like to add? All right. Reports, concerns, referrals, counsel travel and training reports. Councilman Broughtman, you have anything?
No.
Councilmember Greenough?
I know that this isn't the time for this, but I think that we need to speak with Pacific Power about potential the potential for redundancy lines coming into Delmont County. I know there's this, this is the main line, right? That is being impacted by this, but maybe we have a conversation about the potential for that in the future.
Yes, and we have we have had that conversation with them, and I'm sure that they're they're spending a lot of money on this. So I would hope that that will incentivize them to try to create some more resiliency within this area. I will speak to just the the two megawatt generator. It is consuming somewhere around twenty-five hundred gallons of fuel per day just on that one alone. So when we start talking about additional twelves, I mean, the the math adds up quickly. So I would, I think they're incentivized. There was a there was a discussion of is there an old connection between us and Curry County? There there was at one point in time, but that hasn't been in place for several decades. It's kind of is what I've been told in talking with Pacific Power. I'm sure they will be looking at those things, we will be asking them to to look at those things, and maybe once this is all said and done, if we have council consensus, we can get Pacific Power here at our next council meeting or at a future council meeting, and we can just discuss a little bit more about resiliency and what their plans are.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Down the road meeting, we don't need to bug them anytime soon. But yes, that would be cool, actually, yeah. Councilmember Shlong?
If I did anything before last Friday, I don't remember. I'm sorry.
It's all good.
Mayor Protimenscore? And I don't have anything to add because the last couple of days have been kind of a blur for me, and I'm not nearly as busy as some of you, so. We will move on to our ceremonial item. This is item number one, Suicide Prevention Month Proclamation. And this is, I think it's definitely an apt time to be coming back to this and all. Since we don't have Mr. Clay, Gordon Clay? We don't have Gordon Clay here to 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 take this today and say something, I'll go ahead and speak on it a little bit. Whereas suicide is a major public health problem with immediate and long-term effects on individuals, families and communities. And whereas the ongoing stressors brought by COVID- nineteen pandemic, stay-at-home mandates, economic turmoil, social unrest, growing inequality, likely modified risk for self-harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion or background, and suicide is a major public health issue that requires vigilant attention and preventative action, especially during times of a pandemic. And whereas four thousand one hundred and sixty-four Californians lost their lives in suicide in two thousand twenty-two. And whereas suicide was the fourteenth leading cause of death in California in two thousand twenty-one, the second leading cause of death in twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds, the third leading cause in ten to twenty-four-year-olds, and the sixth leading cause for thirty-five to forty-four-year-olds. And whereas each death by suicide directly impacts numerous family members, friends, loved ones, and by extension, the entire rural community. And whereas research shows that ninety-five percent adults would would do something if someone close to them was thinking about suicide if they only knew what to say or do. Now, therefore, the Crescent City City Council hereby proclaims September two thousand twenty-three as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month. Be it further resolved that the council encourages all citizens to learn the warning signs that trust their gut and use that information to ask a troubled friend, colleague or family member, are you okay? And be prepared to listen, the conversation could change a life. And like I was saying, this is right now with what's going on. When we have this very bad air quality out, it's keeping people in, no power, there's just there's there's less social interactions in general. When you're having those kind of thoughts, the quiet, it's deafening. And you don't have power, there's idle hands or the devil's play thing, I think, is the quote my grandma used to tell me when I was young. And it's the isolation can really play a it can it can when you're in that state of mind already, it really can affect affect you. So I would definitely say know your neighbors, I think that's that's an important thing. My father-in-law runs a lawn care business, and he went to check on all of his elderly customers and you know, some people hadn't seen people in a couple of days, and it's 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 sad. One lady broke down to him, started crying, it's it's, check on your neighbors. It's it doesn't take much. Hello, how are you doing? I I hope you already know your neighbors. I know my neighbors, I I always say, if if my house is on fire, if someone's robbing my house, I hope my neighbors don't just look the other way. And this is a great opportunity to get to know your neighbors, so go check on them, make sure they're okay. Gordon Clay always ends his his, what he says with, know know the signs, are you okay? And that's that's, like I said, it's extremely important, especially right now. And he is not here to receive this, so. And he is not here to receive this, so we will, I will attach my signature to one of these proclamations and we will get it right out to him. Okay? All righty, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Item number two, council meeting minutes for August seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Item number three, warrant claims list for period July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three through August eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Item number four, payroll report for the period ending August twelfth, two thousand twenty-three paid August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And item number five, quarterly cash and investment report as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mayor, I move to approve items one, three, four and five.
Second.
Do we have any public comment on items technically three, four and five of the consent calendar? Item number one was the suicide prevention proclamation. Any public comment on this?
No hands raised.
For clarification, that was, that was items two, three and five, right?
Three, four and five.
Four, two, four.
Two, four and five.
Two, four and five. Sorry, two, four and five.
I recuse myself from item number three.
All right, so seeing no public comment, please pull the vote on items two, four and five.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlong?
Yes.
Mayor Protonen score?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
Mayor, make a motion to reapprove consent calendar item number three, the warrant claims list.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on item number three?
No hands raised.
All righty, I'll close public comment. Please pull the vote.
Mayor Wright, just real quick, who made the second for the two, four, five?
Mr. Altman.
Okay. And then item three was, who made the motion?
You did.
You did, thank you. Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlong?
I recuse myself.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Protonen score?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes. All righty, we have no reports and presentations, no public hearings. We will go ahead and call to order as the Crescent City Housing Authority, please roll call.
Director Altman?
Here.
Director Greenow?
Here.
Director Schlong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enscore?
Yes.
And Chair Wright?
Yeah, here. All righty, we have two items on this agenda, consent calendar, the meeting minutes for the March twentieth meeting of the Crescent City Housing Authority.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any public comment?
No hands raised.
Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment. Please pull the vote.
Director Altman?
Yes.
Director Greenow?
Yes.
Director Schlong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enscore?
Yes.
And Chair Wright?
Yes. All righty, we have one item on new business. Item number seven, conditionally award twenty-six project-based vouchers to the Harbor Point Apartments Project. Your staff report.
Good evening. So I just want to start by saying that if Eric felt the need to apologize for his outfit, I owe an even bigger apology. I live in Gasky, I am evacuated, so I just grabbed whatever was clean, closest to me when I left for work this morning. And I actually didn't even remember there was a council meeting until mid-morning. It's really strange to be in this situation. It's like your thinking becomes stunned almost. And the EOC and the city and the county and all of the updates from the radio have just been a lifeline. Because you're not thinking clearly, and here you have qualified, competent people kind of guiding you through it and doing that thinking for you. So that has nothing to do with what we're here tonight about, but I just wanted to, to say that and how much I appreciate it as somebody who's going through this. What we are here to talk about is the Housing Authority's recommendation to commit twenty-six project-based vouchers to the Harbor Point Apartment Project. This is a project that's being proposed by Danco out of Humboldt County. It's probably familiar to the council. The Housing Authority previously committed twenty-six project-based vouchers to this project. It's a senior twenty-six, well, it's twenty-seven units, one manager unit. Twenty-six of the units would have project-based vouchers committed to them. The commitment that we made in two thousand seventeen, ultimately, back then, the project was not successful at obtaining tax credits. And after three years, the project-based voucher commitment expired. So we were lucky that city staff, Bridget Lacy, was paying attention. And there in December two thousand twenty-two, there was a competitive local housing allocation application. The city applied for and received five million dollars. So that brought this project back into the discussion. We believe that with all these pieces together, we can make this project happen, and, and we're really excited about it. It's desperately needed. As, as you've all heard me say many times, that the expanding the supply of affordable housing is our, our primary objective right now with the Housing Authority. And I believe that Chris and McKenzie are on virtually, so they can answer any questions that you might have about the project. And then if there are questions about the project-based voucher component, I can certainly answer any of those.
All right, counsel, any questions? All righty, no questions. All righty, then I will take some motions.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we conditionally award twenty-six project-based vouchers to Danco for use at the Harbor Point Apartments. Pending completion of NEPA review and subsidy, subsidy layered, layering analysis prior to the execution of an agreement to enter into an agreement to execute a housing assistance payment contract.
I think we need to approve the resolution, which is the next part.
And I further move to approve and adopt resolution number HA two thousand twenty-three dash three. A resolution of the Board of Directors of the Crescent City Housing Authority approving the selection of a housing choice voucher program-based voucher proposal.
Second.
That's a lot to.
I got you. I was like, oh.
I just want to say, we've been trying to get this project up and, and moving for a lot of years, and I'm really happy to see this moving forward. Senior housing particularly has been a huge need in our community, so I'm, I'm very pleased to see the direction that this is going.
I'm in agreement. I, I actually believe that this may have started when I was on the council way back when. So back in the old days, when I was younger. So yeah, this is so needed, and I'm so grateful that we were able to successfully move this project forward based on our staff. Success and involvement, and I look forward to this helping us solve our crisis with housing, being a part of the puzzle anyway, for our community in the future.
All righty, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this? What did I say, public comment? Do we have any public comment on this?
No hands are raised.
All righty, please pull the vote.
Director Altman?
Yes.
Director Greenow?
Yes.
Director Schlong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enscore?
Yes.
And Chair Wright?
Yes. All righty, I will adjourn to the next meeting of the Crescent City Housing Authority, Monday, September eighteenth, six P M. right here at the Flynn Center. And reconvene as the city council. Let the record note, we're all still here. So we're at number eight, item number eight, new business, letter of support for Elk Valley Rancheria for an American Indian Alaska Native Tourism Association grant application to help fund the Talawa interpretive walk.
All right, thank you, Mayor Wright, members of the council. So this is a, another opportunity for the city in partnership with Elk Valley Rancheria to, to really keep expanding our Beachfront Park project. And to, to really enhance it to a level that, that is consistent with the goals of this council, which is to make this city a destination city. And that is what we're working towards. We have a great design team on board right now that have envisioned some really wonderful things. It's all in partnership with our Talawa Cultural Committee who has been guiding this process. And this is a, just another extension of another, of another grant that we received, which is the California Coastal, Coastal Voices Grant, which provided two hundred thousand dollars. And so I'll, I'll bring up the map of Beachfront Park. But first, I'd like to just acknowledge our grant coordinator and, and economic development coordinator, Bridget Lacy, who happens to be in the audience tonight. And then she's available to answer any questions, but she has just been a, a driving force when it comes to this whole, this whole process. She is taking the lead, writing this grant. She was a big part of getting the, the first two hundred thousand for it, as well as a lot of the, the grant funding, the millions of dollars that we received through Prop sixty-eight. And so just continues to expand it. Hats off to, to Ms. Lacy, who is doing a, a wonderful job and is also going through a lot, you know, right now with, with the fires as well. So let me share my screen. We can talk a little bit just about Beachfront Park. I know this is a little challenging for county IT, so I apologize when I do it this way. So this is our Beachfront Park overall general development plan. Does that come up for you, all the council on the screen? Okay, and you've all have, have seen this in the past. I'm not going to dwell on it too long, but we have the bike park over here, the pump track, and we're just getting about to thirty percent design on that, so exciting things on that one. This is the expanded Kidtown, doubling the size of Kidtown. The amphitheater waterfront plaza sits in this area here, a one-mile loop coming around. But a key part of this is this whole Talawa interpretive trail experience that we're really, really driving. And so at this point, I'd like to go ahead and I'll stop sharing my screen with the, with the general one. And I will, I'd like to share a video actually that our consultant created for an open house for the cultural committee. It's about seven minutes. It really kind of walks you through, and then we can, then we can talk about the individual components and what, and what these interpretive areas will be like, and what this experience is going to be like coming through. And then it really creates sort of a design standard for us, which I'm pretty excited about with, with some of the different pieces. Keep in mind, these are concepts, so there's a lot of little nuances that will need to be worked out on them, but the, but nonetheless, I'm excited, excited about this project.
It's a thirty-five acre community park with open green space along the oceanfront and adjacent to Elk Creek. The city has been in the process of reimagining the space to include amenities that fit the needs and desires of the community and includes a wider variety of activities suited for locals and visitors. In addition to the sports and entertainment opportunities, the project also includes several interpretive experiences that are under development. The existing tsunami walking tour documenting the nineteen sixty-four tsunami that devastated Crescent City has been updated to include several stops in Beachfront Park, in addition to the five that exist in the downtown area. Other interpretive exhibits will be clustered thematically throughout the park and include the Talawa Cultural Walk, an indigenous plant garden and gathering circle, local history that includes mining and timber industries, and information about the local marine mammal life. This presentation features the design concepts for the Talawa Cultural Walk, an interpretive experience being led by a committee of local Talawa people with stories being told along the trail and in first person by residents of the area. The project is open to everyone to participate. The Talawa Cultural Walk will feature coastal stories in audio recordings, video and interpretive exhibits about the life ways of the Talawa long before colonialism, the brutal upheaval in the mid eighteen hundreds when the California government issued an order to exterminate the Northern California indigenous people and the resilience of modern culture. As part of this project, the Talawa Cultural Committee set forth guiding principles to guide the trail for coastal stories development. They are truth, inclusion in the landscape, connect with generations, importance of place, growth and understanding. The individual stations on the cultural trail will have a privacy fence formed with slats to give a person on the inside enough privacy to take in all the information while allowing visibility from the outside to ensure safety. Slats will vary from station to station in height, form and shape to reflect the subject matter and also allow the station to focus on a particular viewpoint. The parks that comprise an individual station will be: One, a ten-foot wide circle with a Talawa basket pattern, preferably customized for each site. Two, a privacy wall that is customized for each station to reflect the subject matter of the video. Three, an entrance path into the station to allow for wheelchair access with an opening quote to set the stage for the experience. Four, interpretive materials that will be developed with the theme of the stations. Panels will be organic and not flat. Five, an audio station that will provide playback of the Talawa audio and video. Six, seating for one to three people depending on the configuration of the station. These are three examples of design concepts that present different ways the stations can be developed. They show small, medium and large installations that look similar in design but are very different in experience. As a person approaches the canoe station, the undulating shapes of the privacy wall provide a dynamic backdrop to the salmon and steelhead swimming in the wall. As we turn onto the pathway, the back of the station opens up and reveals the canoe, together with the interpretive information. In the canoe are a paddle and a catch. This station is twice the height of the canoe station and provides the visitor with a majestic feeling. As we turn into the center, we can see the openings in the bark of the wall, providing places to sneak into the center. The back shows us seedings and interpretive information, and on top, a ring to delineate the size of the tree. One thousand years to create a tree with this circumference. The ring provides opportunities for displaying quotes when the visitor looks up. The ten-foot diameter here is adorned with the rings of the tree. This station differs from the previous concepts in that the wall is placed halfway on the circle, providing an exterior and interior experience. Before entering the dancehouse, interpretive information is provided. On the inside of the station, seating and audio/video playback is provided. The walkway around the station provides access to the interior without having to go through the low doorway. We will briefly review eight concepts and several options for the dancehouse in the following drawings. The canoe. An ocean canoe is placed inside the circle with a privacy screen that simulates the flowing water. Inside the wall may be a whale or sea lion. The canoe contains a paddle and a catch. The wave. A rolling, breaking wave envelops the visitor as they enter the station. It displays the power of water and the respect it deserves. The elk. In this station, the privacy wall uprights are rotated ninety degrees and create an abstract forest where elk are walking through and hiding. The redwood. A majestic installation that instills awe. Openings in the bark allow for access through the bark. The base displays the pattern of the tree rings. The burden basket. A woven basket with large openings to facilitate a metal woven wall. The seal and clam. Here, the privacy wall is wavy water with a seal playing in the wave. On the lower part, an elevated bottom houses clam. The dancehouse one. The following are several concepts for the dancehouse. The first is a round base like all the other concepts, but the privacy wall is now placed in the middle of the station. This provides an exterior and interior experience. On the exterior, we have interpretive panels. The interior has seating and an audio/video display. The second option provides the same experience, but now the base is square to provide an experience closer to being inside a house. The last two drawings show the same design options, but with a wall that now displays a roof line that more closely depicts the entire side of a dancehouse. The sides of the building are a little wider to provide more structure. These are the concepts for the physical displays that will be placed in the Beachfront Park. They are merely vehicles for delivering your story. If you want to get involved with this project, here are some of the many ways you can contribute to your story.
A, a video actually designed for the Talawa Cultural Committee so that they could share it with, with their community and, and really understand, you know, the project and, and what is happening here. And I would say it's a, it's a truly special project, right? It can be a really important piece, will be an important piece on so many different levels. You know, as you walk through and that tie into nature. And then as you come around the park on the other side, right? You're going to get the history of, of Crescent City and the mining and the, and the lumber, and, and so that's it on the, on the more the front street side of things. And then like they were describing on that, that far end of how. And then like they were describing on that, that far end of Howe Drive where the barbecue pits are, you come down there and then it'll be more about the marine mammals and some of that things to tie in the Marine Mammal Center that's right there. And there's just, there's so much that we can do that is just truly uniquely us. And it's, and it's really special to kind of see it come together because I've never seen anything like that, especially in a community park. So I'll share my screen a little bit again, go back to the, to the overall concept, and we'll talk a little bit more about this specific item tonight. So as you come in, the S-curve, that's another critical piece. I'd like to thank Mayor Wright, Mayor Protem and Score for really, you know, we've talked about some of these things, but you're going to have an experience when you come in that has a sense of context. So the big thing is you're more than likely right now just to miss Front Street altogether. And so we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. And we'll go into these details a little bit more, but there'll be some wayfinding with a sense of context that'll be down in this area. As you come down, you're going to see more of it as you hit the stamps way, right? There'll be an exciting entry piece there that again has that sense of context. But right here, as you're coming down, that's where that, that big redwood would be. And what more appropriate, you know, piece than, it's going to be about 20 feet tall is what it'll be. And the slats will be a little wider than what they thought, and we'll be working with Chief to make sure, make sure we have the design right. So there's just concepts. But as you're coming down, you could see this, this mock redwood right by the cultural center and then be able to go inside it and understand a little bit of the history of it. And as you come down, that, that burden basket, the, the close captioning said bird and basket, but that was just a, it's a burden basket, and that'll be actually on its side. And there's some great shots of that. And then that canoe piece will be here. Howe Drive is a little bit different. Howe Drive, in when it's all said and done, we'd like to have some bump outs that actually take you out where you might have some more space out there for that really low sort of interpretive element. For now, those will just be, those will be kiosks, but they'll be, they'll be nicely designed kiosks to have kind of a similar experience, but on a much lesser scale. So you don't have this, you know, the giant, you know, piece that's sitting there that kind of would look out of place along Howe Drive. And so those are, those are three, and those kiosks would be funded by this grant at this point. And then really what this is, is this is the development of Battery Point. Battery Point was a, was a critical site, is a critical site, was a former, for the Talawa, Ta'otan as it was called, and to tell that story of Talawa village, Talawa life, the story of Battery Point and what that was and how it was used as really an imprisonment camp, you know, at one point in time. And just to again have people be able to start their journey here, continue it all the way down along Howe Drive or along that coastal trail, have this critical element be a part of it and have that sense of context. So this is where that dancehouse might be there. So you've kind of seen what that, what that village feel really would be because that's, that's really what this, this area was. And then also then continuing on down to Brother Jonathan, which will hopefully be funded in the future as that was another critical site and having something there too. So you have that sense of context kind of tying you all the way through it as you go through your journey in, into town. And that's really what's for the council tonight. Again, partnership, so we are not eligible for this grant. Elk Valley Rancheria is as a, as a tribal governmental agency. And so they are willing to, to apply for it. It's for $250,000. That would develop, so finish the design of this Battery Point as well as, as well as those kiosks. And we'll be working with them. Again, it's just an expansion of, of the Beachfront Park project itself. The city would, would be responsible for, for paying those costs, and then we would get reimbursed as Elk Valley is getting reimbursed.
All righty. Counsel, questions?
All righty. Seeing no questions, let's open up public comment. Ooh, that's some feedback. Okay. Seeing no public comment, I will pull public, I will close public comment and look for a motion.
Are you looking for a motion or just directions? Doesn't say to approve anything.
Yeah, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support.
Mayor, I'd make that motion that we approve and authorize you to sign a letter of support for Elk Valley Rancheria's AI ANTA grant application to help fund Talawa Interpretive Walk and direct staff to bring back a memorandum of understanding with Elk Valley Rancheria regarding the implementation of the project.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Score?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
All righty. Item number nine, Val Valpolician art collection update and grant application authorization.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I do have to apologize in advance. I do have a presentation prepared for you tonight. However, I was not able to complete it, so I will go through what I can and then discuss the rest based on the staff report. But thank you very much for hearing this item tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and share that now. I apologize. My screen is partly covered. I'm trying to find the present button. Okay. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. Give me a moment. It's been a long day. All right. There we go. Okay, so this evening I'm here to give you guys an update on the Valpolician collection and get your authorization to apply for grant funding to continue work on this project. So first, I'd like to remind everybody of the background of this project. All of you are aware that last year, we were informed by Hambro of the donation of art. City Council approved that donation, and we have since been working tirelessly to get that art in a place to show to the community. And in May, we opened up an exhibit. Okay, so let me just go back. So back in February, we came to council and requested a budget in order to open up an exhibit to display the collection to the community. And council approved a $10,000 budget for that exhibit to run it from May through October as part of First Friday events. The goals of that $10,000 budget was to design the exhibit, to contract with a historical researcher, to contract with a curator, to create a short documentary outlining the background of the donation and the artist himself, and to market the exhibit to a regional audience. So the first step in that was to prepare the space for exhibition. So with the help of so many volunteers organized by our Grants and Economic Development Coordinator, Bridget Lacy, tons of work went into preparing that space to make it look and feel more like an art exhibit than a previous bank location. And since then, it has been completely transformed into a beautiful exhibit that included mounting paintings, cleaning the facility, because the facility was not clean at that time. So our volunteers actually did do a lot of cleaning in the bathrooms and the kitchen and the spaces itself, creating and displaying signage and artist information, setting up technology, and arranging sculptures throughout the building. So with that consultant budget, we brought on several individuals, including Annalise Flynn, who is the principal at Vernacular Art Services LLC. She provided curatorial programming and project management support. Also brought on was Jillian Morrison, who is an art historian, and she wrote an academic document illustrating the story behind Valpolician's collection of work. And then we also worked with Paul Kritz at K-Fug Community Radio. He worked with his team at Redwood Voice to create a short documentary that went into Val's background, as well as the city taking on that art collection and where it is now. So here are a few images of what that space was turned into. So for anyone in the community who has not seen the exhibit yet, this is what has been done to the, the space and what is open on First Fridays. So the work that Jillian Morrison did was a historical write-up. It included a background of Soviet Ukraine under the era of Russian control. It outlined a history of the oppression that was experienced by Mr. Polianin, as well as his journey from Ukraine to Japan and ultimately the United States and Crescent City itself. The Redwood Voice team, they provided an overview of Mr. Polianin's background and the value he, he places on freedom of artistic expression, which is a theme that is seen throughout the entire exhibit, how he made his way to the United States and Crescent City, and it documented his donation of art to the city and the process that was, went through to get the council to accept the work and moving and storing the collection and the journey to exhibition. So as I mentioned, the exhibit opened on May 5th. It had a great showing. We estimated that at least 200 people came to that. We did not track attendance. However, it was full the entire time. There were constantly people coming in and out. It was very well received. We've gotten very positive feedback since then. And there are just a few images of that opening night. One of the things that council prioritized when we first brought this was that we need to have a plan moving forward. There needs to be something that is going to be done to this collection once we're done with exhibition. We have a short period of time that this art is going to be in the Bank of America Building. So with that in mind, staff organized a art preservation committee. It is made up of several community members from various backgrounds, business owners and real estate agents, nonprofit leaders, a very eclectic group of people who are interested in seeing this work continue to be shown in our, or have a place in our community, I should say. So the committee established some very specific goals, including to determine where the collection will go once construction begins at the new city hall, determine who or what will pay for future costs of storing and exhibiting the work. And I'm sorry, my screen is partially covered right now. Hold on one second. And determine who will staff or manage the collection if continued to be exhibited. Some immediate solutions that were identified by the committee were to liquidate the collection at auction, break work up into smaller portions to display in multiple locations, seek funding to relocate the collection and store or exhibit it, or put everything into storage until another plan could be determined. Some more long-term ideas would be to find creative ways to exhibit the work based on funding availability, such as purchasing several shipping containers to recreate that same kind of feel that they had when they were in the containers out on, across from South Beach, to purchase a commercial building space to exhibit and set up a nonprofit to run it, or to use the old city hall building to exhibit some of the work and store the rest in, in accessible spaces. So as we all know, the new city hall is being worked on. It's in the design phase currently, and staff are in talks with the USDA in terms of loan funding. And the most recent communication was that construction could potentially begin as early as May of 2024. So with that in mind, staff are working very diligently to find what the next steps are going to be for this collection and that, and what is feasible. But given the current timeline for when city hall is planning to move into the building, staff are requesting that we continue to exhibit the work in the meantime. The community has continuously shown up to view it every single time that we are open. It is currently being staffed by volunteers and two city staff alternating. One of them is myself, and I'm a salaried employee, so I can be there. And we've not had any issues with staffing with volunteers. There is, actually, we continue to get more volunteers interested in helping with the project. So that is something that we are hoping that we can get extended, and it's up for consideration for you guys tonight. And of course, we are continuing to pursue realistic paths forward with this work. Staff have continuously reached out to the Kohler Foundation, and recently we were able to speak with a representative. They said that they are going to have it on a upcoming agenda for their board to assess whether that is a project that they can take on. However, the soonest that they'd be able to get to our project would be 2025. And so even if they do take on the project, it would be some time before they could actually address it. And one of the contingencies of that is that after they have gone through the preservation process and it's ready to be put back out into a community, there has to be a nonprofit who can take ownership of it. So the city would no longer be the owners of the collection. It would go on to a nonprofit to have ownership. Okay, so that's as far as I got with the presentation, but I will continue off my staff report. So I will go ahead and stop sharing. Okay. So one of the other things that staff is exploring is the possibility of this work being put into another location, another storefront or empty, a vacant space that's available. So we have been investigating some various locations in the downtown area, and we do have some promising leads. But to help support that, we would like to request that staff, or council authorize us to apply for a community investment grant that is through Coast Central Credit Union. It is for up to $25,000. And we would use that money to pay for rent in the space for a year and any needed costs for renovating the space and preparing it for a new exhibition. Obviously, we have some materials for that, but there would be things that need to be done to that building to get it to a place where the public could come into it. That grant is, it does not require any kind of match. It does require that we front the funds, though. We do have to pay for all the expenses in advance, and then they will reimburse us. So that is due at the end of the month, so we would be putting in an application if council approves of that. Let's see if there's anything else that I'm missing. I think the only thing else that I did want to kind of articulate is that we are, while we are working very hard to get this project to a, a place that is sustainable and that we can kind of continue with, I do want to express that we have had a lot of support from the community. Regardless of what direction this goes, I do think that there has been a lot of interest in seeing it remain here in some form or another, if there is some way to get a nonprofit to assist with the endeavor. We have received some interest from K-Fug Community Radio. Paul Kritz has been in communication with his board. There's nothing that's been officially worked out, but they have expressed interest in helping with the future exhibit. So if this does move into another space like a storefront, they have expressed interest in assisting with that. And we're continuing to discuss the feasibility of what, what they can contribute to that to this project. So with that, one of the other requests that we have, the last thing, is a, an additional allocation of budget to, if we do continue to exhibit the work, because there are minor costs that go into that. So we did request a $4,250 additional allocation, and that covers utilities, exhibition supplies, and then some additional marketing supplies, such as postcards and the hosting of the website that we have currently for the collection. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it back to council for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
So this grant through Coast Central, is the, what, what do you think the odds are that we are able to get that grant in this instance?
It would be difficult to say. I don't know how many other community organizations are going to apply for this grant. However, it is very much in alignment with what they're hoping to fund in the community. The goals of that grant is to, to basically, you know, promote positive community activities. So their hope, that's really what they're hoping to achieve, something that's going to have a positive economic impact on the community, which this project does have potential to do. So I can't really speak to what their priorities are in terms of who they're going to fund, but, you know, we're going to put together a very strong application. Ms. Lacy is a fantastic grant writer, and I have so much confidence in her ability to write a strong application.
One more question about the grant application. Are we going to be competing with people from our community or from every community that has a Coast Central Credit Union in it? How does, how does it work?
That is a good question because they do fund activities that are in Humboldt and Delmore Counties. So Ms. Lacy, do you know if it's a between the two counties? Okay.
Okay.
So it'll be between projects in both communities.
Okay. Counsel, anything else?
I've got a couple of things. November through 2024 for exhibition. I'm just concerned that that's going to cause some challenges for architects and I'm just concerned that that's going to cause some challenges for architects and space designers and things if you're planning to actually begin construction in May.
So May is, May would probably be the most optimistic time that we would do. We did reach out to USDA, had a really good conversation with them. They think city hall would be a good project that could be funded through USDA funds. USDA offers a 35-year term. Interest rates are relatively low. In fact, right now, they're 3.625 is what they quoted us. They said we should probably be planning for somewhere around four, four and a half, just to be on the safe side as we're trying to figure these things out. But for the most part, the architect has been in. He has the layout of the building. There still is access to the electrical list that can get in the building because it's not operating on a day-in, day-out basis. So for the most part, I think we can get what we need to complete the construction documents and be able to hit our construction timing as soon as we get funding. USDA said for, for a project like city hall, it might push to about nine months, which is the, which is the optimistic timeframe of May, all the way to a year. Construction-wise, having a project that occurs in the winter probably isn't too bad, but we will try to get it as soon as we possibly, soon as we possibly can.
So let's just say optimistically it starts in May. Are we going to want to have the art removed from there, sorry, a little sooner than April?
Depending on what it is, but yes, it could be, it could be March, somewhere right in there. You know, as long as it's out, say a month before, construction would be, would be ready to begin or our last showing would be at least a month before. That would give us enough time to get it cleared out for the, for the construction.
The other thing is, I, if I remember correctly, I thought that in the first round of funding that the council provided, that money was supposed to provide some research on how to, where this art will be located in the future.
To it, yes. So that is something that our staff is continuing to work on. There has been no pause in trying to identify the next steps for this project. And we are hoping to have something by the beginning of next year. So even if this grant opportunity does not work out with Coast Central, we're not stopping there. We'll continue to look for other funding avenues that could support this project, including other community partners, if there are nonprofits that can step in and help, if we can do some fundraising, whatever we need to do to continue to find a means to transition it somewhere else. The ultimate goal is to move this to another location. And if we can contribute to, continue to exhibit it, we will. But that is the ultimate goal, is to move it somewhere alternately.
And when will you find out about the grant? Do you know when it will be awarded? Of next year?
Yeah.
24?
No, I think it's, no, I'm sorry. 68.
I think we're all a little, a little tired.
Thank you. And my other question is, let's say we are successful and we are able to move it to a downtown location and pay rent for a year. What about all the costs that go along with that?
The grant is meant, we're designing it to continue to, to fund getting it into the space, renovating the space and paying for rent. Beyond that, we will have to come back to council to discuss, you know, if we do want to continue funding exhibiting it. It might be storing it there. It really depends on what the priorities of council are or if we can find other means of funding it. If there are other, as I mentioned, nonprofits who want to step in, help to, you know, staff it. There aren't a lot of costs that come along with exhibiting it. You know, we can put fewer resources into it than, you know, we are currently, if needed. So.
I would, I know you mentioned that you're salaried, so it doesn't cost anything for you to be there, but that's not true. So it does, I mean, part of your salary would be going to the time that you're spending there. But also it takes away from your other priorities, the time that you would be spending there. So I just want you to have that in your forethought. And in addition, I would just say that I did go see the exhibit and you've done a lovely job. It is beautiful, the way that you've set it up. I'm still not in support of the city, be expending an ex, I'm sorry, my words are not coming out. An exorbitant amount of money to continue to have an art museum. If we had a lot of money, I would love to. And so I really think that we need to expedite finding the new home because I do believe that it deserves a new home. And I do believe that people have been very supportive from the community. And so I understand that and I want to support that, but we need to look at how to make that happen. So that's, thank you.
And maybe I can just add just a few thoughts to that because that really is the, you know, that next key pathway on this is we have over 900 pieces of art. And it is, they have turned the Bank of America building into a really a special place, better than, better than I ever envisioned it would be. And that's the sentiment that the public is, is saying is that my goodness, right? This is something you would see in San Francisco where, you know, it's, it looks like it was made to be an art gallery. But we need to take that next step for city hall as well, which was the council's original vision. We're working hard on that. We have 900 pieces now of art that's not just paintings, right? It's statues, it's, it's large, it's hard to move. There's a lot of logistical issues that come with that. So this could be that next step that hopefully then would allow the Kohler Foundation. And so this is, there's not a lot of great options when it comes to this, I don't think. Kohler is, is one of those. If we can, if we can accomplish these goals, and we have had some very positive conversations with, with some downtown business owners with some vacant spaces, we could fill some of those with the grant money, buy enough time to get the Kohler Foundation in, and then they, they continue to fund it through a nonprofit and the city is able to, to turn this over, really be the catalyst for this. Turn it over. Kohler Foundation funds it for the long term. That is really the, you know, a golden pathway to, to move this through. That's, that would be our number one target. And then we'll have to maneuver if that doesn't come, come to fruition. But if we can start it with this process, get it going, I think Kohler would be that much more apt to, to join in.
Councilman Broughtman, did you have something to say?
This is not an appropriate, this is not appropriate to spend taxpayer dollars on. I'm firm with that. I don't feel right about it. I feel guilty about the money we've already spent on it, even though I think you've done a wonderful job on it. And I was there when we looked in the containers and said, yeah, we need to save it. I, you know, it takes $10,000, $10,000 to move 914 pieces of art is the saddest thing because that's what you're going to need next to move it. And it's just, we've already spent way too much money on it. I'm so sorry. Because it is a great exhibit. It's nice to have our own, you know, art museum in town. I did, you know, go and a lot of people were enthusiastic about it, but there were some people who didn't agree, you know? But art is, you know, is in the eyes of the beholder, you know? Not, not everyone's art is someone else's art either, but my main concern is the expenditure of taxpayer dollars on our art project. And the continued expenditure of taxpayer dollars for an art project is my, I mean, we're talking about maybe spending a little more here and there and hanging in there till 2025 and hope Kohler helps us out with our art project, you know? And I don't, I hate, I hate letting, I hate letting you guys down. I really do. But I can't let down my community and their dollars that, that they're giving us to spend responsibly towards, you know, our community and our, you know? We have, we have some important projects we're not, we can't pay for this year, you know? It's, and, and turning the city hall, Bank of America into city hall, that's, we're going to have to borrow. You know, that's, we're, we're in the borrowing phase now, not the, you know? Is there, has anyone talked about charge and admission and maybe trying to, because if the community really supports it, they'll pay a little bit to see it, right? And that way we can get the, the whole fundraiser going. But, you know, I don't, I can't say yes to any more funding. I'm sorry.
Anybody else?
Well, I have to say we were going to have to borrow for city hall either way. I don't think the $4,000 or $10,000 is, is.
Well, I was talking more about our capital development projects. I think we have like four or five that we can't pay for. We stained one side of the cultural center.
No, you're, sure. No, you're right. And those things do need to happen, but when we made this decision, we, we made it, we all saw what was in front of us and we, we looked at it and said, this, this may be something that could be really good for our community. And I understand that you have qualms about it now, but I, I still believe that this has a real chance to make a difference in our community and spur our art programs here and our art community to be something greater. I do. There's all sorts of communities around the world that have lots of art and, and, and people go and travel around the country, around the world to see these art displays. I believe that this could be one of those places personally. So I, I still support this. I think that the grant application, I think that's a great opportunity. I think that Bridget Lacy, she does an excellent job. I think she can, she can bring it home. I do.
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure. But I, I, I believe in this project. I understand it's at a cost. It's, it's not free. But I do believe that this could make a huge difference economically.
Just a couple of things, Ms. Taylor. Have you, have you considered with the, with the cessation of First Fridays in, in October, whether or not we really feel like we would get the same kind of foot traffic in November, December, January? Whether, I guess my only question is whether it warrants trying to stay open during a period of time when First Friday isn't happening? Because I would think that First Friday has at least helped some of that foot traffic. So that's just a question. And I would, I guess my recommendation would, would be that if you try November and three people come through, maybe, maybe we don't expend your time, staff time, whatever in doing that. And I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think that it's just something to be considered because obviously First Friday is a big driver for what happens downtown. Second thing, in, from a, from an economic development standpoint, it's almost impossible to generate money without spending money. I mean, from an economic development standpoint, it's just, it's just the way it works. From an art standpoint, I, I will agree with Councilmember Greenow that, that the opportunities that we have to, to expand the awareness of our art community is, 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 is a good one right now. As your representative on the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Bureau, we are currently revamping the, the mural walk as a, as a specific targeted tourism opportunity to bring people here to say, there's murals all over here. And so it's an art-focused tourism marketing strategy that we are working on this year. And so this is sort of the year of art. I, I've talked to several people. If you look at what's happening with art in, in Eureka, especially in downtown, the old, in Old Town, we have, and I've talked to Mr. Weir about this, we have two, two prominent alleyways off of Third Street that I think are prime locations for creating a, an art walk where that people will come here just to see these. It may mean that we have to step back and reevaluate some of our very stringent, if you're going to build a mirror, you've got to paint a mural, it's got to be this, this and this. Well, you know, that's not what art is. And that, that may be an art project that you give to a junior high kid, but this is not, you know, fill in the, the color paint by number thing. We, we need to be able to say if we want to embrace the arts and if we want to embrace art as an economic driver, then we have to be open to those types of things. So I, again, I don't disagree with, with Councilmember Altman about the, the concern of expending public funds on this. But the reality is, is in 2006, we had to ask as a community, should we expend public funds on tourism marketing? Should we even spend money to market our area? There were people who said, reexamined that, and I was part of that process in, in 2015, should we still spend the money? And we went back and revisited it again. And, and since then, both the city, the council, the city council, the county and the harbor have all increased their contributions into tourism marketing because we see that we are no longer a resource-based economy and we need to be able to do those things. And it takes an investment of public funds to do some of those things. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of private corporations here that are going to come in and swoop in and, and save the day by putting, infusing lots of money. But I will say this, and then I'll stop with this, because I know everybody's tired, but, but, but we have had some people who have moved into our community who are investing money because they see this as an opportunity of a place that wants to grow. And so, I mean, I agree with both of you. There is a, there is a sense of angst always when we're spending the public funds on something that doesn't fill a pottle and doesn't provide an essential service. But if we don't build up the economy in this community, we're never going to be able to pay for those things. We're always going to be grant-dependent on every piece of infrastructure we have here if we don't find a way to energize and continue to grow our economy outside of the resource base that we have. So that's why I'm supportive. And, but I, I don't want to say that, that I just go, oh yeah, like rose colored glasses.
I appreciate it that you admit that we're grant-dependent.
Yes.
We're grant-dependent because we don't have the general fund to just spend whimsically. We rely on Bridget to bring the funds in to this area to do our dreams.
I, well, we, we.
To, to what we, we dream this community can be someday in the future. And hopefully we, you know, make the right decisions.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I mean, the reality is, 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 is the, the sewer doesn't fly, flow down Second Street to be without grant funding. We don't have half of Front Street rebuilt with, with new storm drain system without grant funding. We wouldn't, while we're spending a significant amount of money of, of just general fund money and measurers money to do the other half, you're right. But, but that represents every small community in America today. It is, it has to live with these confines because small towns in America don't have those resource bases. They don't have the big companies. They don't have that. They're, the company town is, is a thing of the past. And, and I guess I look at it from this vantage point. When we talk about this, these federal funds and these state funds, my taxes pay for those too. So when I, when I say I'm committing to something, I'm committing to something that I, I pay taxes. I've been paying taxes for a long time, so I don't take it lightly. And so I don't disagree with you, but I, I still believe that we have an opportunity to build for our future. And, you know, if, if we end up being wrong over an art collection, then, then I'll stand with you and I will acknowledge it was a mistake, just as, as you have acknowledged that and taken that on yourself. I'm not willing to do that yet. I still think we have an opportunity. I still believe in it and I'm still going to support it. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Counsel, anything else?
Counsel, anything else?
May I, sorry, may I respond to, Mr. Enscore had a couple of questions. Is it okay if I respond to the?
Thank you.
Okay, that's okay.
I should have let you.
No, that's okay. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm addressing what counsel is bringing up as concerns with the project before we move on and continue to answer questions. So before I answer your first question, I did want to just speak to, we're talking about grant funding and getting that funding into our community. One thing, for this type of project in particular, having something that really identifies that this is something that community wants, it has a path, it has the investment, is what grant funders look for. So the fact that we have come to the place that we have is what's going to help us get funding. That we've opened exhibit, we have people coming to it, we have community interest, that will, that's what will continue to make us competitive. If we didn't have those things, we would have a very hard time getting grant funding. So it's not just that we are asking counsel to continue putting funding into this to go nowhere, it is really to fuel there being an end game for this, because that is a priority. Staff is not taking that lightly. It is something that we are taking very seriously. We understand that we are utilizing taxpayer dollars for this. You know, part of my role with the city is to promote quality of life for our citizens, and that's always at the forefront of my mind. So I don't take this project as something that is, you know, frivolous. I do see it as something that is going to help to generate some positive feelings in our community and hopefully spur more art and culture, because I think our community is very rich with that, but we need more to help to fuel that forward. I do think that it is something that helps our community feel invested and like this is a place they want to be, a place they want to live, raise our children, and continue to invest in. So that is where staff is coming from with this project. I did want to answer the question about whether we think we'll get traffic in the building. So while that is hard to speak to, because we haven't yet really had many opportunities, we've been open a handful of times outside of First Fridays, and we did get traffic that came through those days, and we didn't highly promote those days. So I do feel if we did promote it more, gave it more attention and tried to get more attention to that, we could get more traffic. If we found that it was not successful, obviously, we would reevaluate that. We don't want to have something open that people aren't coming to. We also have been exploring the potential of working more with the downtown divas to perhaps help to support that, maybe offer some additional First Fridays. And also, there is a First Friday that happens during the light parade, so that's another opportunity. So there are some other avenues to go there. You know, it's not without thought. So I just want to make sure I address those points, and if there are further questions, then we can address those.
I was just gonna say, after listening, so if you are looking at this as a tourism possible project, then maybe the funding for your $4,200 could come from the chamber or the VB. And if not, where, where is it going to come from?
Do you mean beyond this request, or if we don't receive this from council?
The $4,200 that you said would take to continue the exhibit.
So at this point, the chamber, I don't believe, has any budget to allocate to this project. We haven't explored that or requested that from them, but although their funding technically does come from our, so the city, the county, and the harbor, so regardless, it's gonna come from one of our entities to support it.
But your budget amendment, where, where are you going to take the money from?
It would be general fund money, yes.
I'm in support of getting the grant to move it out of City Hall so that other people can continue to appreciate art. I love art, want art in our community, fully in a, in support of that. I'm not in support of more general fund money being used. If you can do it with grant, I mean with volunteers, then in sort of a support of that. And I wanted to ask, just based on what Mr. Altman said on the $5 entry fee or whatever, can we, is that legal for us to do, to accept like an entry fee as a government?
We could establish an entry fee. I don't know how much that would earn, you know, if you received the same numbers.
Right, well, 200 people, $5 is $1,000, and that's gonna pay for your exhibit fees. I'm just, I'm just talking out loud right now, but.
Couldn't you just ask for the $5 or more donation? It's, it's a donation in support of the gallery rather than it being a, or looking like the city's trying to make money on the art. I mean, that's not what I meant. I, I thought it would be a good fundraiser donation at the door type thing.
We do currently accept donations, and they do go into a donation account that is going to go towards the future of the project.
Do you know what that?
I don't know what that amount is off the top of my head. I know that we've been bringing in somewhere around $80 to $100 each exhibit, and we've been open, you know, five times at this point. Sorry, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it's somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, let's go ahead and open up public comments.
Thank you. My name is Holly Jackson, and I have a photo studio upstairs in the Tommasini Building, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker, retired from the state, and thinking about opening a private practice here in Crescent City. I've lived here for a long time. My mom is Shirley Cook. She's 97 years old now and living the life of leisure in Texas with my brother. She started the Redwood Mural Society. She's the founding president of Redwood Mural Society and is responsible for the mural on the Renner Building, the mural in a day, and the one on the side of the Ace Hardware, which is not aging too well unfortunately, due to inadequate wall preparation. I made a 10-minute video on the mural in a day that's on Facebook. It's gotten quite a few views, but some of you probably haven't seen it yet. So I'm very interested in media, and I'm very interested in publicity. And I know that artwork, the value of art varies dramatically depending on the status of the artist. So when an artist dies, the value goes up. If the artist is well-known, the value goes up. If the artist is unknown, a magnificent work of art can go relatively cheaply. I would like to point out, before I read this short statement, that the city has in its hands now an art collection that is arguably worth, and forgive me for sounding crazy, but millions of dollars. I think that this is world-class artwork. When I first saw this stuff being moved into the Bank of America Building, I rushed in and met Bridget, and I said, I'll be glad to take pictures of this artwork for you to help you catalog what you've got. And I took about 300 pictures, and then for one reason or another, didn't continue. But I also made a video of some of those pictures I took, which were just pictures for cataloging, not display, so there'd be a significant difference in those pictures. So that said, I'd like to read this short statement. It's three paragraphs. "To the Crescent City Council, as a longtime resident of the North Coast and of Crescent City, I would like to applaud the city council members for the decision to host the Val Polianin Collection, currently housed in the Bank of America Building or future City Hall. I think that decision in and of itself is a statement of how our town sees what can be possible in its future. From the moment I set eyes on major parts of the collection, I recognized what I believe to be a resource of profound, profound value to the evolving public image of Crescent City locally, regionally, and indeed nationally. I implore this town city council to favorably consider any effort to allow the collection's true value come to light and avoid becoming a cautionary tale of saving a penny to lose a dollar. Adding to the collection's value is the inspiring story of Mr. Polianin himself, who sought freedom from the stifling censorship of his Soviet socialist homeland to show what unleashed inspiration and hard work can accomplish in the land of the free." That's my statement. Lastly, I would just like to say on the way out of here that what we have in our hands now is something that's worth a lot of money, that would shrink what we've spent and what we're considering spending to an insignificant sum. And even if it were to be auctioned right now, it would probably bring in quite a bit more than what we've expended. So when we talk about spending public money, there's a lot of things to consider. I will.
Finish that thought, so your time comes up.
Okay, thank you very much. One more thing?
Finish your thought, yes.
Okay. Regarding the $4,200, I will commit to donating $500. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Actually, yes, we do have one hand raised.
Hi, counsel. Sorry for my appearance. I'm at the incident command in Gaski, but I had a short statement, if you guys can all hear me. So I have some information about economic impact of arts. So I've been conducting needs assessments around the county, and I've heard staffing, staffing shortages in most of the organizations I've talked about, especially in specialists in white-collar positions. And the inability to attract and retain these specialists was identified as a threat in the SEDs. Many employers say that they have a hard time attracting and retaining these employees, partially because there's a lack of cultural and social opportunities in Crescent City. This art is an opportunity to help build up the arts and culture section of the city to help attract and retain these professionals. Scholars have found that the arts have a serious pulling power for high-salaried professionals, and these, these professionals are really interested in arts and nightlife and the, the kind of things that displaying this art would support. Studies have also pointed out that the arts are a real contributing factor in stopping youth flight from communities. Youth flight was specifically listed as a weakness in the SEDs document. The art display provides a tourist opportunity even when the weather is poor. This helps diversify our tourism draws, and even if the art isn't the sole reason people come here, it'll make them stay an extra day. Americans for the Arts found that one-third of arts attendees are from out of county. This is national data. Two-thirds of the group said that the arts were their main reason for visiting, and 41% they would go elsewhere if the art was not present. So this art, this art display and the art itself is the groundwork of community placemaking. A community placemaking is a development, economic development strategy that aims at making towns a more unique place to have a distinct tourist draw and hook. This art helps create a real Crescent City feel that people can't get anywhere else. Preserving this art can support tourism and education, which are a key part of our team's acronym in the SEDs. This project supports Goal One of the SEDs by helping with recruiting and retaining intellectual workers. It supports Goal Two with tourism diversification. It supports Goal Five as an educational opportunity for local students, and Goal Six as an attractor for small business employees and owners. It supports Goal One and Five from the city's economic development plan with employee attraction, and Goal Seven and Eight through its use as a tourist attraction and possibility to enhance downtown. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you for your public comment. Anybody else?
No other hands are raised.
All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the council.
Well, I know that we've had quite a bit of discussion on this issue, and I know that there's been quite a bit of consensus when it comes to the grant application, so I'd like to move that we authorize staff to apply for the Co-Central Credit Union Community Investment Grant Program.
Second.
All righty, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman?
Are we voting on the resolution or the grant?
I just moved for the grant.
Yes.
Because I knew that there would be.
Yes, I like grants.
A difference in the vote potentially.
He said yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I am tired too. Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Enscore?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and adopt Resolution 2023-61, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending the fiscal year 2023-24 budget of the City of Crescent City.
I'll second that.
All right, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman?
No.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
No.
Mayor Protem Enscore?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
All righty. Thank you very much. All righty, and let's move on to item number 10, Resolution Ratifying the Proclamation of the Director of Emergency Services, proclaiming the existence of a local emergency.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Wright, members of the council. This goes directly to the item that we started this council meeting with, with the emergencies before. Council, this declares the, the emergency for the city. Obviously, there are tremendous impacts from emergency responders, mutual aid, city, city staff time, community impacts just on, on an economics scale to the businesses with the fire, power outage, and the 199 being closed. It's definitely, definitely a disaster when it comes to all of those factors.
Mayor, make a motion. We approve Resolution 2023-62, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, ratifying the proclamation of the Director of Emergency Services, proclaiming the existence of a local emergency.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment?
No hands are raised, mayor.
All right, please pull the vote.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Enscore?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
All righty, we did already have the city manager report. Do we have any legislative matters?
There's nothing.
All right, we'll, we'll hold. One thing I did forget to mention, did you have something?
Just after the council reports, I do have a couple other items to report out on.
Okay, cool, that works. We can, let's do that right now.
One other just to add to the fire discussion, I would just like to point out Senator McGuire's continued involvement. He has set up a daily Zoom call with myself and C.A. Lopez with Pacific Power, as well as members of the, of the Forest Management, Incident Management Team. Those occur daily, and he is there, he is present. He definitely wants to, to help push, provide resources, and some of those, those pushes and his, his overall support of this community has helped in, in identifying critical needs, and I'm sure has helped in making this the number one priority in the nation. So that was first and foremost. Also, I wanted to give just the council an update on the Raze grant real quick. We, we talked a lot about Bridget's work. Bridget worked tirelessly on this grant as well, and we were, we were this close, we were right there. So there are a total of eight categories. We had highly recommended on seven of those eight, and we're, we're basically the next category down on, on the eighth one itself. That put us in a very highly competitive spot. Overall, there were over 1,100 applications that were, that were submitted, over $15 billion were requested, there was only about $2.6 billion that was awarded. There were 162 awards in total, some of those were planning grants, so there were 113 awards in total. They, ours were, were one of 215 capital projects that actually made it all the way to the, to the Secretary of Transportation's desk. So, so of that, 215, 113 were funded. That close. They said that, that they would love to see us again, right? And, and the quote, we, we absolutely hit it out of the park. There wasn't a lot of constructive feedback on the grant application when you get that close. It just says, at that point in time, you are, you are the best of the best, and they just simply just don't have enough money. And so there were some really tough decisions that, that were made, and unfortunately, out of the two piles, funded, not funded, ours, we're putting the not funded. They definitely want to see us try again. And again, thanks to our community partner, Elk Valley Rancheria, that partnership, that grant, right, which this is our fifth time applying, and, and with council direction, we will keep trying to sharpen. we will keep trying to sharpen, sharpen that pencil. This one was for approximately $17 million that would have completed Front Street. It also had the piece of the bus infrastructure in that parking lot, so that was funded by another grant. So we will, we will have to look at what that next application looks like, but it would have also funded the improvements all the way to Battery Point and, and the, some of the, the improvements with the interpretive section that we were talking about tonight as well. So we will keep continuing to cast as wide a net as we possibly can to try to complete this vision that, that the council, that community has set forth for that beachfront area.
Mayor, may I make a couple more comments about the fire?
Yeah.
Thank you. Just a few things that I forgot to mention that I think are important. We are updating the Office of Emergency Services Facebook page with our eight-page update about every two to three hours. And so it's a great resource to go to if you can get onto Facebook. Bless you. And you will have literally up-to-date information every few hours. And it mentions places where you can actually go to get propane, water, ice, charging stations, all of those things that the community has been running out of and then we're getting more. And I just want to, I just want to say, our business community has so come together and supported our community through this time. I mean, Fred Meyer has like brought in different, extra truckloads of supplies for us and Babich Trucking, you know, offered to take water free of charge to livestock. I mean, just, you can see all of this on that update, which you've all received in emails, every single one of them. So you can see how it's progressed from update one to update 16 tonight. And then one more thing I forgot to mention, the tribes have been very involved, their EMS teams have come to the table as well. So that's been important in our work. And then Christie from Finance has also been helping with hotline. She took the phone home and answered it all night long and she received phone calls all night long. And Neil and Randy have been just really great partners. But one thing that just stands out to me, when you're a mom and you have kids that you're so proud of, and you just continue to support your son and his endeavors, the people that have been there for just about everything that the city does, supporting their son, is the Weir family. And Rich Weir and Sherry Weir have been there. We're there at six or seven in the morning and we don't leave till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. And they've been there every day, working and volunteering to support Eric and to support our city and I thought it was worth mentioning.
Thank you and I do appreciate that and they, I'm very, very proud to be, to be, you know, their son and also just what they do for our community and yeah, I'm extremely proud of, proud of them. One, one thing as I need to mention though is some of the updates have, have just included a change in the conditions at the fire. They, they are now closing South Fork Road, so I wanted to make sure we announced that. So South Fork Road will be closed to the public of your resident up there. You will need to show identification to be able to go up there. They're, they're starting to get some traffic up in that area that was, that was congesting some of the fire operations and so they just want to limit that to only the very necessary at this point. There's not a change in the evacuation status, but South Fork Road is now closed to the public. I also wanted to inform the council, the governor has not declared at this point. So the county has, has declared or in, the board will ratify that tomorrow. The city declared, right, and the council ratified it tonight. And so we will be writing a letter to the governor requesting that they, they also declare this as, if that does not occur, there's not a, there will not be a reimbursement to the county and city on this. And so we need to get that declaration from the, from the governor. And then we also have Chief Carey, I know has his hand up and would like to speak, and Chief Griffin?
That's it.
So the, yes. The exact notification that went out is Dillard County Sheriff's Department is closing South Fork Road in accordance with the Six Rivers National Forest Supervisor's closure order number 102306 effective August 20th through September 18th. That's, that date could probably, you know, change as, as conditions change. All vehicles will be asked to show proof of residency at the closure entrance. This measure is taken to ensure incident safety. Forced access is not allowed. This includes hunting and all other activities violation of the closure could result in a citations. Everyone's patience is much appreciated during this time. And again, it's just really to make sure we have effective fire operations. And so I know Chief Carey has his hand up as well.
Let's hear from him.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, sir.
Okay. Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor and to the council. I just wanted to say a few words, just in my position as fire chief, just what a tremendous support you all have been as our community leaders. I thank you for that. To Mr. Weir, Mr. Lopez, it's been nothing short of awesome to watch the county and the city come together to really serve our community in the biggest moment of need. So I'm proud to be a part of that as well. We have tremendous support from our volunteers and our paid members. I just wanted to comment on the pride I have. We're able to support a type one structured protection engine with a crew of four as well as a, a water tender to the incident with a crew of two. We're going to be supporting that all week and indefinitely as long as we can staff it. These members of the community are evacuating their families, they're losing food like everyone else out of power and they're still stepping up to the plate and trying to support this mission on the front lines of this fire. So extremely proud to be a part of that and leading that. Thank you to Chief Griffin. PD has been a tremendous support to fire as well. And I just wanted to thank you all and let you know a little bit about that. I'll have more to report hopefully on the next meeting about some of the activities specifically that they've been a part of on the forefront. So thank you all.
And Chief Carey has been there as well every single day. His firefighters have been so supportive of the EOC, sharing their kitchen and, you know, the food. We had Dollar General actually bring all of their frozen foods before they went bad to the fire department. And so that's been, you know, just a great thing. And he's been supportive of just about everything we've done, just there and providing resources and not to mention the firefighters that are now going out and supporting this incident. And I just wanted to say, without, wherever Sherry Weir goes, Barb goes. So Barb has also been there every single day. So just, I'm sure I'm forgetting people, but I just, I'm so thankful for everybody.
Counsel, anything else? All righty. One very, very small thing. I've heard it said all over the place on the radio, on Facebook posts, the, the OES phone number, sorry, I couldn't remember the acronym, the OES phone number, 707-464-0911. All over the place, I've heard it honestly, probably 100 times today alone with all the information that's just getting blasted out through the school district, through Facebook, through the radio, which by the way, the radio, again, if you don't, if you didn't hear last time, it's 8:12 and 5 for updates. That's on KCRE or KPOD if I remember correctly, right? Yeah. When you're checking on those people, if they have needs that you can't fully fulfill on your own, that OES number is probably the best place to call. So one more time, that's 707-464-0911. And, and with that, I will adjourn us to the next city council meeting, Tuesday, September 5th at 5:30 right here at the Flynn Center. Thank you.